Greetings and welcome to the Socco City Council meeting on Monday, April 27, 6:30 PM. Calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Recognition of members present. All city councilors are present at the current time. If we're going to skip over item three, the Pledge of Allegiance, and move on to item four, which is under general, or is one thing under general tonight, and that is due to some questions regarding the loan, the COVID-19 emergency loan fund that was brought forward earlier. The, we want to further clarify, the COVID-19 emergency loan fund, the Socco Downtown Redevelopment Fund, or what's known as SDRF, was amended at the Economic Development Commission's April 13th EDC meeting, and did so accordingly to Section F of the SDRF, where the SDRF can be amended by a majority vote of the Socco, City of Socco Economic Development Commission. The amendment renamed the fund to the Socco Economic Development Fund, expanded the fund by creating a sub-program, the COVID-19 Emergency Loan Fund, and expanded the district boundaries to include the entire city of Socco. Loan guidelines essentially mirrored the original program's loan guidelines, and the sub-program essentially mirrored the original program's loan guidelines, and added specificity for loan forgiveness. In addition, seven tax increment financing districts were amended last year. All included public notification, public hearings, city council approval, and the Commissioner of Department of Economic and Community Development's approval of the city's ability to do the following according to state statute. Capitalize, fund a revolving permanent loan fund and/or investment fund for business in Socco, according to 30A RMSA MRSA 5225-1C3. The EDC and city staff recommended modify and expand an existing program to expedite the responsiveness for the COVID-19 business impacts using the funding and loan mechanisms and processes already in place through this other main finance agency, or SMFA. In addition, the city had a legal authority to do so under the already approved TIF development programs, as approved by the city council on State of Maine. To date, there have been over forty inquiries, and several applications are already in process. We are thankful as a city that we had the mechanisms, processes, and the legal ability to establish and expanding revolving loan fund in response to the COVID-19 business impacts. That is the only other thing, that is the only thing under general comment. Moving on to item five, which is committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee correspondence to council at this time? Seeing no committee correspondence to council, moving on to item six, which is public comment. City Administrator Kenrath, have we received any public comment at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have three pieces of public comment. They are all sort of budget-related, so I could read them now, or I could hold them until our budget public hearing, but they were submitted for public comments. So if I'm reading them now, unless you want to wait until the public hearing portion.
You can, you can read them now.
Okay. So our first piece of public comment comes to us from Wendy, Lindsey Mulcahy. "To whom it may concern, my name is Lindsey Mulcahy. Although I am not a resident of Socco, I am a current fifth-grade teacher at CK Burns Elementary School and have been a part-time, been a part of Socco Soul community for the past five years. As an educator and avid champion for my students, I am writing to you to express my favor with a Socco School Board budget proposal that was decided during the last meeting on the first of April. Primarily, I'd like to address the imperativeness of keeping the curriculum coach positions, resource room position, and interventionist position at CK Burns School. Please understand that our coaches are the backbone of our school. Lauren Alaro, our EOA coach, is a skilled professional whose invaluable expertise is in necessity for our ongoing rigorous EOA curriculum. As a fourth-year teacher who recently switched to teaching fifth-grade EOA, I have relied heavily on Lauren's support. She works tirelessly to organize coaching cycles that meet the needs of every teacher in the school, helping us to work towards student-centered goals. In every coaching cycle that I have worked with Lauren, I have met my student-centered goals and moved my students to a higher degree of learning than they ever would have with only my teaching repertoire. With her assistance, I was able to get each of my students to eighty percent or higher on their post-assessments for the reading and writing units of study that we covered together. Most of these students scored a zero percent on their pre-assessments prior to, prior to their learning with Mrs. Alaro. If you've had the chance to view the difference between the CK Burns and the A data from last year to the data from two years ago, you've noticed the same upward trend in student literacy success. We can attribute this to Lauren's abilities as an educational coach and her unprecedented knowledge of district mandated curriculum. Having worked with the curriculum developers at Columbia University, Lauren has become a resource we cannot lose. If her position is cut, our school will feel the effects of that setback for years to come. Carrie Lamo, our highly skilled math instructional coach, is one of the most respected and knowledgeable leaders within our district. Carrie's position as a coach has benefited CK Burns School beyond her coaching. Four years ago, when we lost our principal, she stepped up and assumed the temporary role of assistant principal. Having been the assistant principal for our school, prior to becoming a coach, she has been highly regarded as an effective leader for her entire career in education. Leadership roles aside, her abilities as a coach have shown remarkable skill in collaborating with staff and raising our student achievement in mathematics to the high standard that it is today. Take the Eureka Math Program, for example. When I was first beginning my teaching career, I started as a third-grade teacher, where I was first introduced to this math program. If you have ever experienced Eureka Math, you know that it is a much different approach to teaching mathematics than traditional methods. Though it is embedded in research-based best practice, there is a huge learning curve to understanding the program, teaching the program, and helping students understand the program. Without the support of Carrie Lamo, I would not have been successful at teaching math that first year. In fact, due to her support through our coaching cycles, I began to feel more confident teaching math than I did EOA. My third-grade students were receiving a highly rigorous and successful math education due to Carrie's support. If her position is to be cut, our math program will suffer, and our school leadership will lose the curriculum support it needs. This will be an extreme negative consequence on our students, who will now only be able to reach a minimal capacity for their math education. Furthermore, our math and reading interventionists are already so few in number that we regularly have to put students on the waiting list to receive their tier-three support. Our students who do not meet the grade level benchmarks year after year have been pushed along because there is just not enough room for them on a tier-three cycle. With class sizes so large, it is nearly impossible for their classroom teacher to work with their struggling students to the extent that they need to catch up to their peers. Taking one of these precious interventionist positions away will leave out even more students from receiving services, effectively widening our achievement gap. This year, I had a student who was very far below the fifth-grade reading benchmark, reading at an instructional level N, when his peers were able to assess texts at level S or T. This student was lucky and able to be pulled away for intervention services right away.
City Administrator Kenrath.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You have reached the three-minute point. How much, how much more is there in this public comment?
About halfway through on this public comment. So if you'd like, I can maybe just, well, we can certainly include this in full in the record with the minutes, if that would be appropriate.
Please include this, please include this not only on the website, under the council packet and agenda, but also email it to all councilors if they haven't got it, and then also, please include it in the meeting minutes, and move on to the next public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next piece of public comment comes from Lindsey Pylon, Board President of the Dyer Library Association. Lindsey writes to Mayor Doyle and the Socco City Council. Dyer Library Association, encompassing both the Dyer Library and Socco Museum, continues to serve as an important community resource for patrons of literally all ages. We offer educational opportunities from Medicare to watercolors to reading to toddlers, and social opportunities for adults and children. The financial support that we receive from the city of Socco makes it possible for us to provide dedicated staff, services, and fine physical spaces to our residents. Our executive director continues to research and apply for grants to preserve our historic buildings. We actively fundraise for capital projects and necessary maintenance, such as replacing a fallen cornice and replacing vehicle-damaged steps and railing at the front of the library, replacing outdated computers and ancient hot water heaters. Annual fundraising events, such as the book sale, festival trees, are not only crucial to our financial well-being, but have become beloved community events. Both the library and museum continue to support education and culture in Socco and Southern Maine. The library offers extensive programming and oversight for children from infancy through middle school and above. The museum hosted the Maynard Educators exhibit in January and February, an event that alternates biyearly with the Socco Student Art exhibit. Honored English students visited the museum to enhance their understanding of Victorian era literature, and middle-school students came to learn about the Revolutionary War era. Our education and program managers worked with Socco schools to also create Native American curriculum mandated by the state. In this pandemic-driven time of isolation, citizens of Socco are missing the culture and services of the Dyer Library and Socco Museum. Looking forward to the time, hopefully soon, when we can open our doors to the community, keeping both patrons and staff safe, we will all more fully appreciate how important these services are. I urge the Socco City Council to support this community resource by voting in favor of our very judicious library budget request. Lindsey Pylon, Board President, Dyer Library Association. The final piece of public comment correspondence I have is from David Plavon of Two Surf Street. David writes, "As a lifelong education advocate, disturbs me to see the quibbling between the school board, the city council, and superintendent to pass an education budget. These disputes put our students in the crosshairs, and they are our most important resource. It is paramount that Socco students have access to the best education we can provide. These are difficult times, and the instinct to cut, cut, and cut more in hard times is not the answer. This is, this is when the time is right to look at alternative financing, grants, and other means to retain what we have, or even look for future growth opportunities. The need for education does not fluctuate with pandemics. The need for teachers and staff does not diminish either. Anyone thinking you can do more with less because these are non-normal times is to be mistaken. Sacrifices are part of the equation, but it is wrong to compromise the quality of education. Students returning to school in the fall, if they can return, will have been out of the, out of the classroom for five months. Staff will be more important than ever to transition or to a return to the classroom, or if at-home learning has to be continued. This is not the time to cut staff. Look elsewhere if there is no money. What can be done? How about finally getting title-in resolved? How about using undesignated funds? How about a long-range plan for the future of schools in Socco with more applications for grants and alternative funding? It's time to come together and make smart decisions with the students in mind. Do not shortchange them or our teachers. Be smarter than that." David Plavon, Two Surf Street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. I do have a couple of hands raised from attendees, and at this moment, I would like to invite them to speak during the public comment section, if they, I have now three hands raised. If it is regarding the budget, there will be a time during the budget hearing, so if you can maintain your, your hand raised until we get to the, the portion of the public hearing on the budget. Other than that, we will move forward with public comment. Are there any comments that aren't specifically about the budget? Okay, so a couple of hands have, have dropped off. So at this moment in time, I just remind folks that there is a three-minute time limit, and also to make sure that you, you state your name, and all the hands have gone down. So seeing that all the attendees' hands have gone down, we anticipate a large comments during the public hearing of the budget. So last call for public comment. Seeing no public comment, no further public comment, move on to item seven, approval of the minutes from April 21st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilor Minthorne. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Councilor Purdy. Any omissions, changes, or discussion? Seeing no changes and no discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
No.
Councilor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 5-2 to approve the minutes. Moving on to item eight, which is consent items. There are no consent items for, for the meeting. Moving on to item nine, which is action items. We have, A, a council resolve for special, special budget meeting change. Councilor Minthorne?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city charter states that the municipal budget must be adopted at a special council budget meeting the second week of May. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor has put limits on the number of people who can congregate through May 15th, 2020. This resolution will allow in-person budget meeting to be held at City Hall on Tuesday, May 26th, 2020. I move for adoption of the following resolution. Whereas each year, the city must prepare a city budget as part of its municipal budget, and whereas each year, the city must incorporate a proposed school budget into its annual municipal budget, and whereas the city charter mandates that the city adopt an annual municipal budget composed of the city budget and the school budget combined municipal budget, see Section 604 of the city charter, and whereas the charter obligates the city to adopt the municipal budget at a special council budget meeting the second week of May, and whereas, due to the risks associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor of the state has issued certain executive orders, 14 FY 1920, 19 FY 1920, 28 FY 1920, which limit the ability of persons or parties to meet in groups, and whereas these orders are to remain in effect to May 15th, 2020, and whereas the legislature has enacted emergency legislation, LD 2167, which was intended to provide certain forms of relief and certain governing rules and processes, including for municipalities during the statewide COVID-19 emergency, and whereas the legislature, see Part D, E, and G of LD 2167, intended to allow relief to municipalities so they could reasonably act, enact budgets, conduct meetings, and otherwise continue the vital operations of local communities during the statewide COVID-19 emergency. Now therefore pursuant to the authority delegated by the legislature, including but not limited LD 2167, the city council resolves and does herein order that the annual special budget meeting of the city of Socco will be scheduled for the first Tuesday, May 26th, 2020, after Memorial Day, Monday. Special budget meeting shall be held in public at the Socco City Hall, 300 Main Street, Socco, and the public shall be allowed to attend should they wish to make comment. But the city council will mandate and make use of social distancing procedures and other accommodations to protect all individuals attending from undue risk of transmission of the COVID-19 virus. This order may be rescinded if the governor of the state of Maine extends the statewide quarantine orders, including those limiting meetings to no more than ten people, passed May 15th, 2020. In lieu of rescission, the council may, in the alternative, conduct the special budget meeting in City Hall as a public session at City Hall with no more than ten persons attending, mayor, seven city councilors, city administrator, and clerk, and with a roll call vote. But if so, the council will implement special processes that allow for interactive public participation, including such services as Zoom.
Motion's been made by Councilor Minthorne. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Second by Councilor Copeland. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Archer? Councilor Purdy? Councilor Gunn? Councilor Copeland? Councilor Minthorne? Councilor McFail? And Councilor Johnston? Motion passes. Item B, which is a public fiscal year 2021 minute.
To start the fiscal 20 budget, straight up presented year 2021 budget to the council on March 30th. During the same meeting, the school department budget was also presented by the superintendent. City departments presented this, their budget during council meetings throughout April. These presentations, along with other department or budget documents, can be found on the budget page of the city's website. I move to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 city budget and the Water Resource Recovery Department.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston, second by Councilor Minthorne, to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Councilor Johnston?
I'm just curious if this was properly noticed in the paper. I didn't see anything in the packet that indicated it was, so I'm just looking for clarity from city staff.
Mr. Mayor?
City Administrator Kenrath?
Yeah, I know City Clerk Michelle Hughes did place it in the forum press title, the typical advertisement for our budget public hearing.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call vote on opening the public hearing. Councilor Archer? Councilor Purdy? Councilor Gunn? Councilor Copeland? Councilor Minthorne? Councilor McFail? Councilor Johnston? Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open, so we will hear from the public. Just want to remind the public that there is a three-minute time limit. I will allow you to talk, and notify you when you're allowed to talk. You will have to unmute yourself so that you can talk, and then also just make sure to state your name and address for the record, please, and I'll try to remind folks as we move through this process. First up, we have Tyler Ketterett. You are now allowed to talk, so please feel free to unmute, unmute yourself, state your name, your address, and then you can lower your hand as well.
Hi there. Thank you, Mayor Doyle and council members. Again, my name is Tyler Ketterett. I live at Nine Patriot Drive here in Socco. I've been a Socco resident for most of my life and actually attended school here for all twelve years. I'm here on this call today to talk about the proposed budget, as many others are as well, and specifically the cuts to the intervention program at Burns School, as was already alluded to, that are a part of that. And I'll actually start by just reading a brief letter on behalf of the talented educators, including my mom, within that crucial program. Dear council members, almost two months have passed since staff became aware of the proposed cuts to staffing at CK Burns. Last few months have allowed us time to reflect in what the impacts of this proposed loss of essential staff and what that would have on students. As educators, we believe in doing what is best for kids. It dictates every decision that we make within our roles. As you consider cuts that would directly affect the daily learning here in Socco, you too should be asking, what is best for the kids here? This current school year, a substantial number of students were not able to receive intervention services at Burns School due to understaffing. As we face the COVID-19 pandemic, we believe the need for student intervention services will only continue to increase as we go into the fall. Now, early intervention is key to filling gaps for students. The sooner that we can fill those gaps, the sooner the need for intervention services goes down. Here at Burns, we take in academically at-risk students from two schools in the district, both Fairfield and Young, and do it with a smaller staff compared to the programs within those other schools. Yet despite the constant understaffing, this proposal actually gets rid of an essential ed tech interventionist, who by the way, has a salary that is 100% funded with federal dollars, not with city dollars. We ask you, is this what is best for kids? Furthermore, the math and literacy coaches at Burns School provide teachers with much-needed support. These coaches truly are leaders, both staff and students at the school, and our program would undoubtedly suffer without them at the helm. Again, we ask you, is eliminating these essential positions what is best for kids? All the proposed positions that would be cut at Burns are positions that have day-to-day interaction with students. Ask yourselves again a final time, are these cuts what is best for our kids? Again, personally, I can tell you with confidence, the answer to that question is a resounding no. I think that's pretty clear. I think you'll hear more of that in the coming minutes. This proposal is ill-advised any year, but particularly this coming year amid the uncertainty of what's unfolding right now. It's also interesting how these proposals for cuts always seem to involve the folks in the district with the most hands-on involvement, but yet the smallest share of budget in terms of what they're being paid. These cuts will hurt students, and they will hurt the future of the city's education system. Please recognize that and take action to ensure that it doesn't happen. I thank you very much for your time.
Up next, we have Constantine Gekis, if I'm saying that correctly. I'm now allowing you to talk, so please unmute your microphone, and feel free to present your name and your address for the record, and remember there is a three-minute time limit as soon as you start talking. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Constantine Gekis. I reside at One Blake Avenue. I am also a teacher at CK Burns School, and I will do my best to read a letter on behalf of many of our staff members. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of myself and several other staff members, asking you to support the budget proposal that the school board and the Socco School Department presented to the city council at the last council meeting. This budget already includes steep cuts that will eliminate much-needed school maintenance projects, after-school and summer school programs for our neediest students, and professional development opportunities for staff. While these cuts will be detrimental to our school and students, we understand that they are necessary in our current economic climate. However, we are strongly opposed to the additional cuts that the city council has requested. These cuts, if enacted, will have a profoundly negative impact on our schools, staff, and students. In particular, we feel compelled to advocate for the special education teacher, interventionist, and math and EOA instructional coach positions that will be eliminated at CK Burns School through these budget cuts. Our resource teachers have a very challenging job supporting some of our neediest students. They are responsible for supporting students with a variety of academic and sometimes behavioral challenges. Resource teachers work with homeroom teachers to provide accommodations and modifications in the classroom. They also provide small group pull-out instruction to students who are significantly below grade level. Resource teachers oversee educational support staff members, who work both in the general and special education setting to support students. In addition to their teaching role, resource teachers write IEP plans, hold IEP meetings, and conduct special education evaluations. Research teachers are already faced with large caseloads and a shortage of support staff. Many of our educational technician positions have gone unfilled or are filled by an ever-changing rotation of substitutes, which causes additional strain on our resource teachers, who have to figure out ways to support students without the resources that they need. The elimination of a resource position will provide further strain to our resource teachers by forcing them to cover larger caseloads. This will directly impact the services that they can provide students. Similarly, our interventionists work with students with profound academic struggles. Interventionists are responsible for screening assessment data to identify students in need of intense academic support, developing individualized academic plans for these students, and delivering small group instruction. Their goal is to provide short-term intervention for students who are falling behind in an effort to catch them up and fill in any learning gaps. With successful interventions, students are able to continue working in the general education setting without the additional support of education, of special education services. The loss of an interventionist will mean that fewer students can take part in our intervention program. We can predict that this will result in additional students who will be in need of special education services. It will also impact students who do not receive intervention services, as classroom teachers will now need to devote additional time to working with those students who would normally be serviced by the interventionist. Finally, and most importantly, we would like to advocate for the math and EOA instructional coach positions at our school. Carrie Lamoth, our math coach, has proven to be one of the most passionate, dedicated, and knowledgeable educators that we have had the pleasure of working with. She has had a profound impact on math instruction in our school and district, and works tirelessly to support our teachers and staff. We have not known Lauren O'Leary- We have not known Lauren O'Learyo, our ELA instructional coach, for as long, but Lauren has come to us well-trained in the reading and writing curriculum used in the district and has proven to be an expert in her field. Our instructional coaches have many responsibilities at our school. They provide one-to-one and small group coaching to staff members. This coaching includes providing resources regarding curriculum design and instruction, observing lessons, giving feedback, and modeling instructional strategies. While our coaches provide coaching for our staff members, they specialize in working with new teachers to improve instructional practices. Similarly, they have been an invaluable resource in supporting long-term substitutes when teachers must go on medical family leave.
Konstantina, can you please finish up? That was the timer. Your three minutes has expired.
Thank you. Taking away these positions will be stripping us of valuable resources and leadership at a time when we need them most. Thank you very much for your time.
My apologies for interrupting you, and you were so close to the end. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Becky Corliss. Becky, I allowed you to talk, so please unmute your microphone. Again, state your name and address into the record. You will have three minutes, and you will hear a beep when you get to the end. And we ask that you please finish up whatever comment you're on, and thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rebecca Corliss, and I am a Saco resident in Ward Five at 30 Pepperell Street, and I'm also a fifth-grade teacher at CK Burns School. I've been a teacher for 22 years, 12 of which have been at CK Burns. I would like to express my thoughts on the impending cuts for the Saco schools, in particular, the positions at CK Burns, both math and literacy coaches, interventionists, and resource room teacher. I know that budgets are not easy, but what I can tell you is that these positions are 100% without a doubt vital to our school and, most importantly, the success of our students. Success is measured in many ways, but I believe the most important is succeeding and meeting a child's needs. Successful schools have meeting those needs as a top priority. We want our schools to be helping our students feel confident, helping them see their value, encouraging them to do their best. And I believe, as both a teacher and Saco resident, if we want our students and thus our schools to succeed, we need to prioritize what we value as a community. I would imagine and would hope that we value having the best possible opportunities for our students. We want other communities looking at Saco saying, wow, Saco cares deeply for its students and does what it takes to ensure they have access to the best education possible. All of these teachers are an integral part of providing the best services to all our students, especially our struggling learners. In addition to supporting our students, these teachers are an amazing resource of knowledge in their respective content areas for teachers. In my particular case, I have participated in coaching sessions with our math coach, Carrie LaMoth, in which she provides support, mentoring, and resources on how to make the most of my teaching and best practices, thus giving my students a wealth of opportunity for learning. I know many, if not all, teachers at Burns have worked with both coaches to help make the most of their teaching practice. In recent times, they have gone above and beyond in regards to the distance learning preparation for the students and continue to do so, meeting with content area teams to create meaningful assignments for students during this unprecedented time. I am not sure how we would be able to succeed without them. And also looking ahead, they will be crucial to ensuring that we navigate the uncharted waters of learning when school returns in a meaningful and successful way. This is not the time to cut positions that will be vital to the success of our schools as we move into a post-pandemic time. These positions are part of the fabric of a successful school community, and they are vital to ensure the success of the students of Saco. We owe it to our students to help them on their journey, to show them they are vital members of the Saco community. We can do this by giving them the best educational opportunities. We need to help the next generation become successful global citizens who are proud to say they grew up in Saco. Bottom line, we adults have a responsibility to our students. We owe them the best of their community, the best of their education. Our students deserve the best. Thank you for your time and consideration with this matter, and I hope the city council will do what is best for the students of Saco.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to the next. The next attendee is Sarah Baines. Sarah, I have allowed you to talk, so please unmute your microphone. Again, state your name and address into the record and provide us with your public comment. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Baines, and I'm a resident of Saco in Ward Six, the 17 Winter Street extension. I'm also an employee of the Saco School District and have been for the last 21 years. I'm not speaking for myself this evening. I was asked to read a letter from our STEM teacher from CK Burns School, which I will do for you right now. To the city council members, as an employee in the Saco School District, I would like to share how the cuts being considered have already hurt us as a district and will continue to hurt us as a district. I use "us" because you, your children, and your community members, your constituents, are being affected. First of all, the school board has agreed to a large amount of cuts, already over a million dollars. Those cuts will hurt our community. For example, there will be no paid summer work this year. That means math, language arts teams will not get together to decide on a plan for our abbreviated Wednesdays for the upcoming year. In the past, we have used those days to examine the weaknesses in our school, such as essay writing and stamina, to solve multi-step math problems, and use our findings to create a learning plan for teachers to implement over three months. Specifically in language arts, we discovered the students were weak in reading two articles and synthesizing the information into an essay. The team developed a plan for teachers, participate ourselves, name and scores, examples, give our students the same experience, score them, notice areas of weakness, and develop strategic points to teach, such as how to pick out a sentence that tells you what to write about and how to write about just that topic and not include extraneous information from the two articles, but just glean the information about the topic. Then we changed our teaching, had students practice again, scored and gave them feedback, and gave students a chance to improve their essay. The state scores show huge gains from one year to the next, but more importantly, our students made huge growth in an essential skill needed as adults in the workforce. This was under the leadership of our English Language Arts Coach, and through the collaboration of a devoted team on hot summer days that will not happen this summer, those funds have already been cut. In math, our students are asked to solve problems that involve three or four complex steps, such as putting together the amount of people who have visited a website to a goal of visitors within a certain time period and determining how many more will be needed to reach that goal. This type of complex problem is what our workforce faces. As a school, we focused on building stamina and students, teaching them the strategies such as embrace the struggle, write an answer sentence with a blank GTO, set the focus, draw a model of the problem to show what we know, what we don't know, and what we need to find out, determine each step, and then to solve one step at a time. At the end, the students write the answer in the blank, in the sentence, and check to make sure that the number makes sense to the, in the answer. That process was developed through focused collaboration during summer work hours under the direction of our math coach and rolled out step by step throughout the abbreviated Wednesdays. Without the coaches, the summer work and the abbreviated Wednesdays, the time to collaborate, learn.
Please finish up with your closing statement. Thank you.
Okay. It was quite lengthy letter, so unless you're going to allow me to finish it.
We're really trying to stick with the three minutes so that everybody has ample opportunity. However, you can submit that letter to the city council at socmomaine.org so all of them can have it, and then also, if you include the city administrator, he will have it put on the website and included in the meeting minutes for the next meeting.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the next speaker, which is Tracy Galante. Tracy, I have allowed you to speak, so please unmute your microphone. Again, state your name and address for the record and provide us with your public comment. Please know that there is a three-minute time limit, and you will hear the beep as you're getting towards the end. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tracy Galante, and I live on Five Vine Road. I've been a teacher for 25 years, and six of those are at Saco School Department. I've spent the past three years at CK Burns School. I'm also a parent of two students who attend Saco Middle School and CK Burns Elementary School. I am writing to you today to support the budget proposal that the school board agreed to on April 1st. While this budget includes steep cuts, I understand that many are necessary with our current economic situation. However, I am very concerned about any further budget cuts for our school system as it would have a profound negative impact on our students. I would like to advocate that the math and ELA coach positions, interventionists, and special education teacher positions remain in place and not be impacted by further budget cuts. You have heard letters, you have heard many letters tonight representing the thoughts of many CK Burns staff members. These letters do an excellent job detailing why these positions are so vital to our students and staff. Instead of repeating this information, I will also speak as a parent of two children who have benefited from receiving additional support. My eldest child Haley received additional math support when she was in fifth grade from our math coach Carrie LaMoth. Haley began as a reluctant math student with little confidence in her own abilities. Through Mrs. LaMoth's encouragement and instruction, I watched my daughter flourish into the confident math student that she is today. She is in middle school and no longer needs any type of support. My son Dylan is in fourth grade and currently receiving math support through the same excellent Tier Two programming offered by our coaches, and again, I am seeing profound growth. I firmly believe that our instructional coaches, interventionists, and special education positions are vital positions in our schools. I am confident that this is an effective use of our taxpayer dollars and that elimination of them would be disastrous to our students. Research has shown that early intervention services are crucial to remediate student learning and prepare them for secondary learning. How can we dismiss this by eliminating vital positions that achieve this and result for our students? Every year in my classroom, I see my own students' skills and confidence grow as a result of the intervention skills that are delivered by our math and ELA coaches. I'm continuously amazed by their knowledge base and leadership skills in our building. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, our at-risk students will be in greater need of their support when we return to school. We cannot consider eliminating the core staff that will help us to move our students forward. In closing, I recently heard that teachers are the glue and glitter for our schools and students. I firmly believe that our math and ELA coaches, interventionists, and special education teachers are the glue at CK Burns School. We will need their leadership and invaluable resources as we return from this pandemic crisis. I urge you to accept the budget presented by the school board, which will eliminate the need to cut any of our most essential positions at CK Burns School. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your public comment. The next public comment we have from Tricia Costa Welch. Tricia, I have allowed you to participate. Please go ahead and unmute the microphone. Again, state your name and address for the record. You will have a three-minute time limit, and we'll hear a timer beep when you're at the end. And we just ask that you finish up your comment, and then, thank you again for speaking up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hello, my name is Tricia Welch, and I'm a resident of Saco, and I reside at 12 Blake Avenue. I have worked at CK Burns School for the past 12 years. I was a third-grade teacher for nine years, and I've been a school counselor for the past three years. I'm also a Saco resident, taxpayer, and a parent to a second-grade student at Young School and a fourth-grade student at CK Burns School. I am writing to you today to express my deep concern about the additional cuts the city council has requested in regard to the budget proposal presented by the school board and the Saco School Department. I am most concerned about the proposed cuts, including the elimination of a special education teacher, interventionist, math, and ELA instructional coach positions at CK Burns School. In my most recent role as a school counselor, I have come to realize the vital importance of relationship building. Students need to feel valued, respected, and safe in order for learning to take place. When students have a connection to their teachers and school community, they are better able to take the risks needed in learning. This is possible through building relationships. Our special education teachers, interventionists, math, and ELA coaches build deep relationships with our students and staff. These relationships are crucial to our student's success. If these positions are eliminated, it will have a devastating effect on our students and school community. Our math and ELA coaches, Carrie LaMoth and Lauren O'Learyo, are true experts when it comes to education. They not only provide outstanding lessons for our students and invaluable coaching for our staff, but their true gift is the rapport and relationships they're able to build with our students, staff, and families. Carrie and Lauren understand the importance of making learning fun while building relationships. Along with the interventionists, Carrie and Lauren have created many memorable learning experiences, like Family Math and Literacy Night, Read-A-Thon events, like Read-A-Palooza, Title One Family Breakfast, and the Summer Reading and Math Challenges. These events strengthen relationships with students, build trust with families, and create the type of learning environment that our students need, a place where they feel valued and respected. This is when we are truly able to reach our students academically. You will often see Carrie and Lauren in the halls of CK Burns School smiling and greeting students by their names, asking how their weekend was, or how their dog is, how their football game went. They are truly a blessing to CK Burns School and have a vast impact on all the students in our school community. Our school interventionists and special education teachers also play a pivotal role in our school environment. Through small group and one-on-one instruction, they're able to build trusting relationships with our most at-risk students. When these students feel comfortable, their confidence builds and learning can take place. The interventionists and special education teachers get to know their students and families and can provide the layers of education that are needed for them to be successful academically, behaviorally, and socially. Considering our current situation and the effect of the COVID virus, it is imperative that our students' social and emotional needs are met before we can move forward academically. By eliminating these crucial positions, we are setting our students and staff up for failure. Please allow us to provide our students with the academic environment they deserve. Our special education teachers, interventionists, math, and ELA coaches provide the relationships, support, and expertise that are significant to our student's success. If these positions are eradicated, it will have a crippling effect on our students and the entire school community. Thank you very much for your time.
Tricia, thank you very much for your comment. Next up for the public hearing comment is Eileen. Eileen, I have allowed you to participate. Please unmute your microphone. State your name and address for the record. Remember, there is a three-minute time limit. You will hear the corresponding timer go off, and we just ask that you finish up your comment at that time. So Eileen, please proceed.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Eileen Siegri, 54 Woodman Avenue. I've been a resident of Saco for about 10 years now, and our taxes have gone up so significantly in those 10 years that I'm at a point I'm probably going to end up having to sell my house. You know, I get that we want our schools to be good for our children, but it comes to a point that it's ridiculous what you expect of the taxpayers. I just think that we need to consider that and not include everything that's the best. I get we want our children to have good education, but I think that, especially this year with all the layoffs and everything, a lot of my neighbors are talking about selling and leaving Saco because of the taxes. And that's really all I have to say. I just think that our taxes are too high, and if they continue to go up at the rate they've gone up, and I believe that a lot of that is on the back of the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen, for your public comment. Up next is Tracy Collins. Tracy, I've allowed you to participate. Please unmute your microphone. State your name and address for the record and provide us with your public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tracy Collins. I live at 378 Main Street in Saco. I just want to remind the community that the school board, and I'm sorry, the city council- And I'm sorry, the city council gives a goal to the school board and then the school board is responsible for making the decisions on the hirings and. Employment and positions. But there is no straight face test for students, for cutting. For cutting teachers that and interventionists that work directly with students. I know my children have benefited and you've heard lots of testimony from others. This ongoing push and pull approach every day is exhausting. I can't imagine what it's like to be in your shoes. But I think it's incumbent upon the council to. And the school board to come together and figure out a way that's going to be. Beneficial to everybody. A 9.3% increase is almost where we were in. 2013 when we ended up withdrawing from our neighboring school district. So, this is a pretty big deal. I think there are things that need to be addressed in leadership and need to be addressed as a community and so I'm just. Advocating for the in-person interventions that are going on in the school. Those are the wrong positions to eliminate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy, for your public comment. Next up, we have Carrie Johnson. Carrie, I have allowed you to participate. Please go ahead and unmute your microphone. And again, there will be a three-minute time limit. And if you hear the timer, we please ask that you just finish up your, your public comment. Carrie, please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Johnson. I live at 31 Douglas Avenue in Saco. I've been a teacher at CK Burns School for 10 years. And my husband and I moved to Saco to raise our family because of the strength of the school system. We love this community. Our three children have grown and thrived at Young School, at Burns School, Saco Middle and now TA. So, our kids are now 12, 14 and 16. Through working and living in the same town, I have a unique perspective on Saco. And its schools. I've seen many changes throughout the last 15 years. But one thing is certain. I work among some of the most hardest working and most dedicated staff in the world. These teachers come to school early and stay late. We work very hard as a staff to support families and children socially and emotionally by providing warm and nurturing environments in our classrooms. Therefore, being away from our students during this time of COVID-19, it's been strange. It's been stressful. However, although it's been very scary and uncertain, I've never been proud of our staff. Our staff came together rapidly in a time of crisis. And did everything we could to provide devices, to provide supplies and clear communication to our families here in Saco. The love and support that teachers have given their students is overwhelming. And similarly, the support that parents have given to us in return is heartwarming and wonderful. It makes me very proud to work in Saco. I'm speaking today to support the budget proposal that the school board and the Saco School Department presented to the city council at the last council meeting. Many people have already spoken to many of the points I was going to say, so I'm going to cut my letter short a little bit. The additional cuts that are being requested are very troubling to me because they'll have a huge impact on us primarily at Burns. We are in an already overcrowded building that's going on 100 years old. In comparison with the other schools in Saco, we have some of the largest class sizes. Last year, one of our teachers' rooms was turned into a classroom due to space issues. Our library has been cut. We have specialists that are working in closets. We all know our building is overcrowded, not to mention Young School. I won't go there. But we're not asking for a new building. We're not asking for anything out of the ordinary. We're not asking for a lot. We're asking that you don't cut our valuable, irreplaceable staff members. We can't do what we do without these people. You've already heard many of the reasons that they are valuable to us. Friends of mine in other states did not have the same resources sent home with their children when the shutdowns happened. Schools were scrambling for weeks to try to figure out what to do while their kids were at home with absolutely nothing to do and no curriculum. We had these materials available to our students on day one of school shutdowns. And that's because of our instructional coaches. We realize that the beginning of our school year will possibly be the most challenging start we've ever had. And more than ever, we need these people to make sure that we don't lose track of the children who have fallen behind academically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment, Carrie. I know that three minutes goes fast, especially when you say I'm going to cut something short and then it seems like. Three minutes flies by, but thank you for your comments. The next public comment we have is from Deborah. Deborah, you've been allowed to participate. Please unmute your microphone and then again, state your name and address into the record. And then also a reminder that there is a three-minute time limit. You'll hear a timer go off at the three minutes. And we would just ask you to finish up your public comment at that time. Deborah, proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doyle. I'm Deborah Monahan. I live at 13 Stone Street, Saco. I taught in Saco for 26 years, starting at Fairfield School in the resource room and then grade one. And then moved to Burns School where I taught fourth grade and even one year as a math interventionist. Because Carrie Lamoth was good enough to switch positions with me for a year because of a surgery. Prior to that, I taught both middle school and high school level special ed. And after that, I did K through eight substituting both in special ed and. In the classrooms of all classes, K through eight. So, I think I have a good deal of experience. What I'm about to say is going to sound a little strange because my master's degree is in early childhood education. But reality is that with the. COVID-19 crisis, we're going to all have to make budget cuts in every town in the state of Maine and throughout the country. Because of cuts at the federal, state and local level, the income isn't there. We can't exist on what we have now. So, my suggestion would be that we take a good, hard look at pre-K. Pre-K very quickly went from the original group that was started doubled. With the town paying the amount that was required because of the doubling. I have nothing I'm reading from, obviously. And then. Also had the whole issue of the totale in. I'm wondering if it might make sense for one year, from one year only, to limit the number of children that receive pre-K. Limit the space that's needed, limit the staff that's needed. Go back basically to what's provided by the state grant. And put the rest toward what is necessary, which is K through eight education and what we have no choice on, which is TA. I'm just thinking that that's a place to maybe think about some cuts. I really think that. You know, we have an incredible school system and I know it. I've been throughout it and I've been a part of it. And we shouldn't be. Destroying what we have now because of a crisis that we're in. And what we have now is people. That's the most important thing. We know we don't have the greatest facilities. Like Carrie just said, Burns School is a very, very old school. We know we have a school that badly needs to be replaced in Young School. That's not going to get changed this year. So, what is going to have to get changed is staffing or the programs we have. So, I hope that that's one thing that you'll maybe consider and I have to say that the interventionists at Burns are absolutely phenomenal. As are all the programs and hope that we'll be able to keep them. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah, for your public comment. Are there any other public, public comment on the public hearing for the budget? If so, please raise your hand. At this time, I see no other attendees wishing to. Speak or be heard. On the budget. Therefore, Counselor Johnston.
We move to close the public hearing via order that the city council set the vote on the fiscal year 21 municipal budget and the Water Resource Recovery Department for May 26, 2020.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Menthorn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, before we get to a roll call vote, I just want to remind folks that no. In the public comments, we heard a lot about council-directed cuts. The council have, has not directed any cuts thus far. In fact, the council has not opined on the school board budget and that will be later on in the process, which has mirrored the years before. So, I don't, I want to make sure that that message is, is, is clear that the council has not directed any further cuts than what has already been. Proposed. So, with that, before we go to a roll call vote, I have Counselor Menthorn and then Counselor Copeland. Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, mirroring what you just said, Mayor. I just want to make sure that all the educators understand that the state law. Only allows the city council to increase or reduce the total budget. Across the 11 cost centers. So, last year, there was a reduction of 1.1 million. Eight of the 11 cost centers. Were used and therefore impacted by that reduction. That is all the council has the authority to do. So, when. You cite the individuals that spoke tonight, cite about this position or that position. Or this interventionist or this reading specialist or math specialist, position being cut. Educators, you need to understand, your school leadership team. Is the one who cut you. Not the city council. We have not made any reductions to the school budget at this time. None. Thank you.
Counsel, thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Counselor Copeland.
Thank you. First and foremost, I think everyone needs to know that the Saco City Council values the superior education for our children. We're appreciative of our teachers and of our staff sincerely and completely. The superintendent and school board provided the council with their proposed budget, which included a more than 9% increase over last year. Which equates to about $3 million. And they have informed you that the council is cutting their budget, just like Counselor Menthorn alluded to. Did they, did they let you know that they were requesting a huge increase? Because. My inbox is beyond full of wonderful educators telling me how great these programs are and I know it already. So, I'm not trying to cut them, but. It seems to me that the school board and the school superintendent is telling people that we're cutting. But did you realize that they went up 9%? And we're just asking them to scale it back? So, I don't think that was clearly communicated and I feel like I've been thrown under the bus, quite frankly. Last year, the schools hired 30 additional staff members. So, when you hire and we have to, we hire people in the city too. On the, the city side. When you hire people, you have to consider that you're going to have to pay them each year and that there's going to be increased costs for that. They didn't plan for that. So, now they're, they hired 30 additional people and yet now they want to get rid of these really qualified people who are, are absolutely. You know, angels in my eyes, giving all the instruction that they do and then, you know, to the people who really need it. The superintendent at school board decide where the cuts come from. As Counselor Menthorn alluded to. And to me, it appears that they intentionally selected these specific cuts. In an area that would be sensational like it is. Like our inboxes are full. People are reading pages and pages of well-thought-out, well-intentioned. Communications to us. So, with that all said. The way forward. Is by collaborating. While the school is subject to specific regulations, there are ways to save money. We could perhaps combine some purchasing. I realize some of it is under the, the state mandates on how they have to operate and I, I appreciate that. But there have to be ways that we can combine and. In a, as a, in a bulk kind of way, copy paper, whatever. I mean, and I realize that that's, that's not a lot of money right there. I'm just giving you a quick example. But even, you know. We have. Building maintenance and all these kinds of things that we could coordinate from both sides. There are. You know, because of this pandemic, a lot of people have lost their jobs. We've heard from just a couple of them tonight who've. Talked about people having to leave their homes, to sell their homes because they can't afford the taxes in Saco. We have to remember that. We have to remember that. So, when people and specifically in this time with the COVID issue, people losing their income. You know, maybe one of the. The speakers earlier mentioned the pre-K program. Now, we've already been through this whole pre-K thing and everybody said, oh, the council doesn't like pre-K. Well, wrong. The council very much loves pre-K. We love taking care of our children and we love having the best education possible. However. These are extenuating times and they may call for extenuating measures. Perhaps limiting the pre-K is another way that we can cut some of that, but. What we need to do is have a communication and a collaboration with the school board. So, while I wipe the tire tracks off of myself from being run over by the bus. I want to end it there and let's move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. I see Counselor Archer has his hand up. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also want to just mirror what the mayor said, what Counselor Menthorn said and Counselor Copeland said. And I want to add one more. Won't take too much time. I typically, I look at the numbers, all that. I look at what we spent last year and let me just, I just wanted to make sure that it's clear. Last year, the fiscal year 2019, the actual school budget from the city side was $27,267,360. This year, the administrator's budget, the one that's being presented to us is $29,006,000. So, $29,600,000. That is actually an increase of $1.738 million. So, there isn't a cut. There is still an understanding that there are additional services that need to be paid. And that the administrator's budget that is in our booklet, that is public document that we have. States that. So, there is an increase in, in the budget. And I just wanted to make sure that that was known as well. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. You know, I'm not looking to throw this back and forth like a hot potato. But I have to agree with, you know, my fellow counselors here. I attended every single budget workshop with the school board and I never once stood up and told them to make their cuts. I don't remember any counselor standing up and telling them to, or directing specifically where they should make their cuts. So, these cuts you see were put forth by the superintendent and his leadership team. Ultimately passed by the school board. I mean, I, I think all the positions specifically that have been proposed are all very needed and I would never have personally, you know, put them on the chopping block. I, I had Mrs. Lamoth myself. She was by far one of the best math teachers I ever had. When I saw that she was on the list, I was shocked. I mean, she's got 30-plus years of experience. Why would you ever consider, you know, chopping that person? We're here because just like the cuts, they also control their increases, that being the school board and the superintendent. So, the last two to three years of continually adding staff members. Regardless of whether or not they believed those programs were needed, there's a reality that's based in financial. So, where were all the people in prior years when they were adding staff saying, hey? Maybe we shouldn't add that much staffing because it may have a detrimental effect in years in the future. So, I mean, I do think that over the next few weeks, we'll probably be able to figure out. You know, additional places we could find savings that aren't staff. But, I mean, I've done this seven years now and in every budget cycle, anytime, any. But, I mean, I've done this seven years now and in every budget cycle, anytime any cut is proposed to the school, it's automatically the council's fault and we don't value education, we don't value staff members. I, I went lifelong resident of Saco, I went through Saco schools, my kids are going through it. I value them all. So to say, you know, here we are, let's cut people, put names to them, I mean, it's ridiculous to me and frankly, I'm tired of it. Seven budgets, seven years, and it's a continual cycle. We're always the bad guys and gals up here and we continually say it, let's work together. But yet every time I think that council has tried this, it's automatically, we need, we need, we need, there's, there's no real clear way, clear way of working with the school board, in my opinion. I hope going forward, we can. We've made suggestions in the past and they may be uncomfortable, but it's the only path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any further discussion? Okay, no further discussion.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Archer?
I just wanted the public to know that, that this may have sounded a little bit like frustration and this isn't to the citizens at all. I just want to make sure that that's well known. So again, you did hear a little bit of frustration and yes, there is some, but it's not to our citizens. So just wanted to make sure and I believe council will probably relate to that.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. Councilor Mintorn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Concur with Councilor Archer just said, our frustration is totally with school leadership and the school board and not with the educators, not with the children, obviously, and certainly not with any of our staff in any way, shape or form. Couple points that I think still need to be made. Number one, if all of our educators out there would put their political politician hat on for a minute. If you're putting a budget together that you know has to be passed through the political bodies and then on to the voters and, and you know you have a spending limit that you have to achieve and you've got a lot more that you want to gain. Obviously, if there's any suggestions of reducing that budget, the things you're going to offer up first are the things that are going to catch the most wind and get blown back. You're going to pick the best teachers, the best programs, and you're going to identify those as the items that the council is going to cut. Again, we didn't cut anything. The superintendent has built this straw man argument, as Councilor Johnston pointed out, for seven years now, four years that I've been on council. This is the fifth time I've been through this and the fifth time they pick the very best teachers, the very best programs to where if we suggest any reduction at all, we're going to get rid of those people because the parents go crazy about it, their fellow educators go crazy about it because they are the very best that are being offered up as the sacrificial lambs. And I hate to use those words, talking about people's jobs and livelihoods and commitments to their, their career. But that's in fact what's happening. And I can honestly say for my fifth cycle, I am totally frustrated after having tried year after year after year to work with this group. It doesn't seem possible because every year we get painted into a box as the bad guy and we're not the bad guy here. We're committed to education. I'm still an NEA member and I always will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mintorn. Councilor Purdy?
The, I just, this is my first time through this process. And most people know me as a person, I don't play games. I would rather talk out issues and figure out a way forward. So I am just going to invite any school board member or the staff members to give me a call and let's talk and look at the budget and see what we can, see what we can work out. No playing games, let's just sit down and have an honest conversation. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Councilor Purdy. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to move the adoption of the fiscal year 21 municipal budget to May 26th. Item C is a public hearing, adoption of the fiscal year 21 to 25 capital program. Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The capital plan was presented on April 6, 2020 and the presentation is on the city website. I move to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 21, fiscal year 25 capital program.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn, second by Councilor Copeland to open the public here, open the public hearing on the fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 25 capital program. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 25 capital program as presented on April 6? I see no one desiring to speak on this issue. A last call on anyone who would like to speak in the public hearing on the fiscal year 21, 25 capital program as presented on April 6, 2020. Seeing no one wishing to be recognized, Councilor Gunn?
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council set the vote on fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 25 capital program for May 26, 2020.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn, second by Councilor Mintorn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the adoption of the fiscal year 21, 20 to 2025 capital program budget for final vote on May 26, 2020. Moving on to the next item, which is D, a contract zone agreement ownership transfer request. Council Arch?
You're on mute. Thank you, Councilor Mintorn. I appreciate that. Richard Bryan Escare, on behalf of Next Generation Realty LLC and Herb C. Thibodeau Jr. requests review of 2017 ownership transfers of the contract zone agreement by and between Herb C. Thibodeau, trustee of the Thibodeau Family Property Trust in the city of Saco, February 14, 2012, to Herb, Herb C. Thibodeau Jr. and Next Generation LLC. This is a retroactive request for continued operations with no proposed revisions to any other aspect of the contract zone agreement. It is staff's understanding that the operations have continued, continued on site, in compliance with all other provisions of the contract zone agreement. The decision whether to transfer ownership of this contract zone agreement rests with the city council per section three period D of the attached contract zone. This contract and its provisions shall specifically and exclusively apply to the contract zone request submitted by the applicant. Approval of this contract zone is in part based on the financial and technical qualifications of the applicant as submitted to the city. Accordingly, this agreement in the contract zone it creates should not be assigned or transferred without review and written approval by city council. Such consent not to be, not to be unreasonably withheld. Staff recommend city council review their of the contract zone agreement. Be it ordered, the city council approves the first reading of the ownership transfer of the contract zone agreement by and between Herb C. Thibodeau, trustee of the Thibodeau Family Property Trust in the city of Saco dated February 14, 2012, to Herb C. Thibodeau Jr. and Next Generation Realty LLC and further moves to schedule the second and final reading on May 11, 2020. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Archer, second by Councilor Mintorn. Any discussion? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. So I mean, obviously what we're doing here seems straightforward, but my question is, I, I was here, I was on council in 2017, as were several other. We never heard a peep about this. So this goes back to what I've been saying for years now, which is compliance with, you know, the contract zone agreements, TIFs, whatever. I mean, we have new staff in place and, you know, I, I've had their assurance that things are going to be different, but I'm still curious as to what broke down. Why didn't this come to council in 2017?
City Administrator Gangra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I cannot speak for 2017.
Right.
But Emily Cole Prescott just brought this to our attention just over the past, you know, number of weeks here. I think Emily is available to give us some more background on this. Angie, I don't know if we can bring Emily in. I would, I would throw her over to her for some more background if you could.
I don't necessarily need it today. Obviously, you weren't here and several of the planning staff weren't, weren't here at that time. It just, it raises concerns with me on previous contract zones that I've had compliance with going back to 2014. So I just, again, I get it. We got new staff. I, I have faith in them and I, I'm just hoping that, you know, we don't have too many more of these creeping up on us.
Thank you for your faith. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. At this time, I'd like to recognize city planner Emily Cole Prescott. Emily, do you have any update maybe to answer Councilor Johnston's questions and maybe why this kind of fell through the cracks in 2017? Was it due to staffing changes within the planning department or was it simple oversight or, or were you able to find that in the, in all the documentation that you've gone through for this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went through documentation, did not see anything relevant to why it did not go back to city council for review. I obviously, as we know, as Councilor Johnson has pointed out, that I wasn't here and was not a lot of staff transition in the planning department going on at that time. So I, I don't know that I could, that it was relative to any type of transition. As we find these, we'll bring them forward, I'll bring these forward as I find them. I can't tell you how many there might be because it would take a lot of research to go back and see some of the, some of Saco's contract zones have an ownership clause and some don't. So it would take some analysis on city staff part to go back and give you an accurate number on how many might not have followed their ownership provision clause when it applies and to what contract zone it applies to. So we'll just keep bringing them, I'll just keep bringing them forward as I see them, as they come up. It could be possible, I don't want to say this was or was not the case because I could not find any documentation in the record, but it could be possible that perhaps because it was going from a Thibodeau name to a Thibodeau name under an LLC where Thibodeau was still involved, that perhaps it was loosely interpreted as not being needed because the same family was somehow involved. But I can't say that for sure. I wasn't able to find any documentation. So I think it's at this point, we've had the actual, we, the applicant, well, the owner brought it forward through his attorney to review for the, this ownership transfer and ask that it, it be cleaned up so in the future, they don't have to come back forward. And I did have our, Dick Lambert went out to the site code enforcement officer to check to see if the same site provisions were, to see if the contract zone was still very similar to the original approval. There were no site revisions on the ground that he saw and it didn't look like anything was changing from the contract zone, the other contract zone provisions. So that's why this didn't go to planning board for reprimand.
Thank you, Emily, for that explanation. Any other discussion? Any other comments? Emily, thanks for joining us tonight and, and I think you'll be sticking around for discussion on our new business item A.
Thank you.
With that, motion's been made by Councilor Archer, second by Councilor Mintorn, and seeing no more discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the first reading for the ownership transfer. Moving on to item E, hardship forgiveness for medical patient. Councilor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. on 14 and supported two close family members passed from cancer. Shortly thereafter, the individual's spouse also passed away from cancer. With her oldest son set to graduate from high school, the individual's widow's benefit from the social security will decrease necessitating a refinance on her home. This refinance is not possible as long as the $548 is still outstanding and under collections. I'm assuming that this means that we have a tax lien on her. I am recommending the city accept $55 as payment in full and write off the balance of $493. City staff recommends approval. Be it ordered that the city council authorize the finance director to accept $55 as payment in full on the outstanding ambulance bill of 548. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Copeland.
Second.
Second by Councilor Mintorn. Discussion, I see Councilor Johnson has his hand raised. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. Was this sent to collections or is this a tax lien on the property?
First I'm seeing it is in this, this motion here. So Emily Cole Prescott is the staff resource. Maybe she should chime in and, and.
Counselors, I'm going to bring forward the finance director, Glennis Solis, to maybe help us answer that question. Welcome, Glennis. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the particular balance is in collections. It's related to ambulance billings. We do bill.
Oh.
Yeah, citizens for ambulance services and in the past, those that were not collectible or deemed uncollectible were moved over to our collections agency.
Glennis, were you able to hear Councilor Johnston's question?
I believe it was, this was related to, it's not a tax lien. Yes, but we did move prior to my arrival, outstanding ambulance bills that were past a certain number, I think this past six months, would go to a collections agency and be under collections. So that's how that ended up there.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Could we lean this to the property instead? I mean, that's, that's a knock on someone's credit report if we're sending it to a collection agency, correct?
Yes, but a lien would be as well. I do not believe we can lean a property for ambulance.
For this.
But she's saying that she can't get a refi because of it. So it's showing up somewhere.
Yeah, it's showing up because it's in collections. Anything in collections will also show up on your credit report. So, and that's usually the first step in a refinance.
Councilor Johnston, your hand is still up. Are you, you have any further question?
I do. This is the first one, this hardship forgiveness for a medical patient. It's the first one I've ever done. I'm curious if we have a policy on it because I've never done one before. And then it's just my personal feeling and maybe council agrees that I think if we have any more going forward, we should probably be doing them in executive session because even though we left this individual's name out, there seems to be enough detail here in the background that it's likely somebody out, out there may know who this person is. And I just prefer to do this in executive session and just come out and approve it for the vote versus revealing.
I also.
Councilor Copeland, please wait until Councilor Johnston has finished and you're called upon. Thank you. Councilor Johnston? Thank you.
I'm finished.
Thank you. Councilor Copeland?
I was just wondering why this couldn't have been routed through general assistance and we couldn't have helped them, you know, without all of this hoopla.
So in terms of write offs, in the past, when I've done research on write offs, what I could find is that ambulance balances deemed uncollectible and property, personal property deemed uncollectible routed through council, which is why it's being brought to council now. I can certainly put less detail in the future in these amendments. We could route the question about if it's executive session qualified through our city attorney. As an alternative, I do have the full detail of this particular individual available if council wants more information so I can keep things more succinct in the future. I would like to move forward with starting to write off large swaths of the ambulance accounts and receivables because I have concerns that we're continuing to hold these balances on our books and we don't know necessarily condition of those who are continuing to be technically under collections. It's something that's on my list. And in terms of a policy on write offs, I couldn't find anything in ordinance, internal controls or written policies. But I do think it's a good idea to establish a policy because we also have a significant amount of money in receivable, not related to ambulance collections, not related to personal property taxes, but that probably should be assessed and potentially written off. And I don't know if that has to go to council. If preferences, it goes to council in some kind of form with an attached schedule and at some designated time throughout the year. So we're sort of re-attacking it at the same time in the calendar every year. Finally, the reason that this got brought forward as an isolated case at this point in time had to do with the timing for this particular individual.
Thank you. Finance Director Salas. Councilor Menthorne?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, most hospitals have a account in their revenue fund that's set up for these debts like this. And, and what they do is they, they have an arrangement with the individual to pay 20, 30, 40, $50 a month. Sometimes maybe even double that, but generally it's in the 20 to $50 a month range, which most people can usually budget and make payments on most of the year anyway. And what they do is they take the money that's set up in that account, usually, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in the case of a hospital, and they pay the bill off. And then the person under their agreement pays their $20 a month and it replenishes the account, if you will. And it might be something for all of us to consider moving forward after this item to set up a policy, something like that. To, it gives the people a hand up, but it doesn't give them a handout necessarily. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Menthorne. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, call for a roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorne?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item 10, new business, we have item A, which is 90 Temple Street, Chapter 81 Review. Councilor Johnston?
This property experienced a fire in 2012 and the roof has been left open to the elements since then for the past eight years. The previous owner abandoned the property sometime after the fire and in 2016, the city obtained the property through tax foreclosure. A timeline of city actions relative to this site is included in the enclosed materials. In February 2020, staff completed several site visits and with the collaboration of the Historic Preservation Commission, hired Allied Engineering on the city's general engineering services list to complete a structural engineering assessment report. The Historic Preservation Commission recommended that the property be sold at its February 26 meeting. The planning board recommended its report to sell to the property to the city council at its April 7th meeting. Staff, for the recommendations, the planning board forwarded a positive recommendation of its report to city council on April 7th. The Historic Preservation Commission recommended that the property undergo a Chapter 81 review process on February 26th and it provided feedback about the draft RFP on March 11th. I move to schedule the first reading on May 4th regarding the following order. Be it ordered that the city council hereby and authorize the city administrator to initiate a request for proposal for disposition of city owned property at 90 Temple Street.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston for your motion. Thank you, Councilor Menthorne for second. Any discussion on this matter? The only thing I would like to see is, I would like I would like to see the February 21st, 2020 letter from the letter to Emily Cole Prescott, Allied Engineering. I would like to see that document reviewed because in the first sentence of the document, it says, Allied Engineering Inc. visited the above referenced property on December 20th, 2020 to review the structural condition of the building and framing. December 20th, 2020 has not happened yet. So we should make sure that we get that letter fixed, just so it's right for the record. But I have no other adjustments. Councilor Copeland, you had your hand up, then we have Councilor McPhail. Councilor Copeland first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of quick questions. On the RFP, they have preference shall be given to those proposals that plan to use a state recognized nonprofit or federal historic preservation funding program for the property, such as a federal tax credits and/or the protect and sell program. Why? I mean, why, why do we care where they get the money from? So that was one thing. And then let me just give you the other ones and then I can be done.
Councilor Copeland, let me bring, let me bring Emily Cole Prescott forward so maybe your questions can be answered as we move forward.
Okay.
Andrew, can you bring Emily forward for us? City Planner Prescott, thank you again for, for joining us and I hope you heard Councilor Copeland's question and maybe have an answer for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard one. Were there two because there's a delay when I get promoted from?
Just one so far.
Okay. So that's a good question. I just want to clarify something on the RFP. Staff only put this RFP together as an example of what could be used to potentially sell the property. It's going to be up to council to tell us how the property should be sold if council decides to sell the property. I put that in the accompanying memo. But as far as some of the recommendations that came out of the RFP were derived from speaking with the Historic Preservation Commission, speaking with the code enforcement staff and working with Allied and then also talking with main preservation, who was out on the site as well in February. And thank you for the comment, Mr. Mayor. We'll get that corrected on the memo. I did ask for a very quick turnaround from Allied's point. So they were more concerned about the interior, the structure than their dates, but I'll make sure we correct it. As far as your question, Councilor Copeland, it came, we thought from, from those discussions that the the preference, we want to leave it open enough so that somebody would be interested in bidding and not feel like they had too many restrictions, but also have some sort of selection criteria where there would be preference given to some sort of funding initiative to help with the cost of rehabilitating the site. Because staff sees that the cost to work on this site and keep it on the national register will be very expensive. We've heard different estimates of that amount of work. I've heard 800,000. I've heard 1.2 million. I heard 1.6 million. So the thought process behind it was let's put something into the RFP that makes historic preservation at the forefront of a potential bidder's project.
I would think.
We just want to leave it open enough where somebody doesn't have to use a federal tax credit program. They could potentially tap into main preservation funding resources or other nonprofit entities that are known for historic preservation purposes.
Well, I certainly agree with that, but I don't know that that's some, using those loan processes or grants is, should be preferential. That was my only thing. I think that all those things are great and we should encourage them to use them, but I don't understand why that would give preference. And another question I have is how much have we put into this already? This property?
That's a very good question. I can't speak right now for what was done on the timeline that I presented in the memo, but right now, the Historic Preservation Commission, 2019, they spent about $750 to put together a feasibility RFP document.
I'm talking more about, you know, when the legal fees and just everything that, you know, everything that we've spent on it because we, we've had a history with unit 91, if you remember, but we kept putting money into it in all kinds of ways. So I'm just curious how much has gone into this property?
So what I can do for the next meeting, if council does move this forward, is put together a list of what has gone into the property that we know of. I can tell you it's not going to be anywhere near what unit 91 was because my understanding is on unit 91, there were condo fees.
Right, right.
Something like that.
Right. I know it's not the same kind of money.
But I think it's a really good question and we can certainly provide like a summary of what we know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Councilor McPhail, you had your hand up. Was your question answered? If so, I'm going to go to Councilor Johnston.
Yes, for the most part, but I do just want to double check. So we have not received the receipt yet as to the main preservation's recommendation on delisting the property from the historic registry, correct?
If I can, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely, Emily.
We did actually just receive it on, I think it was Tuesday late evening. It was after I put together this packet information for you. So I'll be forwarding that as part of the next review on the first reading for that packet.
Perfect.
Yeah, it was not recommended that it be delisted at this time, but the report and the findings from Jonathan Hall Main Preservation do take into consideration the substantial amount of work that is required.
Okay.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Councilor McPhail. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I'm trying to remember what I was going to say.
My apologies.
No, it's, it's, it's fine. It was about the, how much we spent. I, I don't believe we spent that much. I mean, we've probably spent less than 20,000, to my knowledge, really to the detriment of the property. You know, in hindsight, thinking back, you know, when I was on council and this came forward, it probably would have behooved of council to actually give some kind of budget to at least close up the roof because instead it has sat there totally open to the elements and really rotted the structure more so. And, and I partly kind of blame myself for that because I, I honestly assumed that perhaps maybe the city would have just done it. But I, there's preference to preservation that really goes back to, you know, when we accepted this property, you know, we had, we had a court order, we could have bulldozed it then. There was, you know, at least some appetite on council, you know, particularly from myself and a few others and several members of the community that wanted to see this property preserved. I, I believe that's really still the, the direction that HPC wants and the planning board wants. And so obviously it doesn't make sense for us to hold on to this property forever. It's rotting. It's literally rotting. So, you know, putting, putting those parameters there and trying to find a buyer that will preserve it, you know, is the intent. But ultimately, you know, as, as Ms. Prescott said, you know, that's up to us and, and I hope that, you know, council is in favor of, you know, moving forward with preservation, but at the end of the day, I'm also realistic and realize that maybe they just say, hey, let's sell it and get rid of it. So, you know, I guess we'll see going forward, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. If there's no objection, Councilor Menthorne?
Yeah, I concur with Councilor Johnston. I, you know, it'd be nice to save it, but I, I think we go, you know, one round through the RFP process and if we don't get any takers, I think it really needs to come down because it is a safety hazard. It is an attractive nuisance for younger kids and that kind of thing. And it should just be removed and then it, you know, we'll sell the lot and get what we can to offset our costs and take it for what it is.
Thank you, Councilor Menthorne. And maybe Councilor Johnston, you can refresh my memory. Wasn't there developer looking to buy this not, not that long ago, a couple of years ago, maybe it's three years ago? There was a development company looking to redevelop it and I think that's why we didn't do anything with it. If I remember correctly.
That's, that's correct. It was Hardy Pond. They had interest and I think they realized the costs were too, too high. But I believe Andrew said that Kelly Archer's got her hand raised, so maybe we could go to her for.
If there's no objection, I'm going to invite the Historic Preservation Chair, Kelly Archer, to participate. And seeing no objection. Kelly, I've allowed you to participate, so please feel free to unmute your microphone and and provide us with some information. Kelly, you're still muted. You have to unmute your microphone. Kelly, we're still showing you muted. Kelly, we're going to try to promote you to a panelist, given that your microphone is, may not be working or given the technical difficulties, we're going to try to move you up to be a panelist. Councilor Archer? Councilor Archer, you're muted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have lost your sound. You there? Perfect. Okay, lost. She was.
Oh, I have lost your sound. You there? Perfect. Okay, lost. She was, some technical difficulties got kicked off. She's coming back on.
Okay.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, just, will we wait for Kelly to come on?
Emily Prescott?
Thanks. You'll probably hear from Kelly some of the work that the HPC has done and is doing with the property. I know that there has been a lot of initiative on the HPC's end to bring this forward to you, and that is where their recommendations on historic preservation came from. So I'm glad that Kelly can join. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, I've allowed you to participate, so feel free to unmute your microphone and speak directly to the council. Kelly, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. As far as the price, over the last eight years, what I know of is about less than $6,000 the city has put towards that property in eight years, and that would be to SMPDC, the attorney's fees on a couple of times, and the main preservation fees a couple of times. Nothing else. The other project volunteer that you were referencing, he's only put in about $3,500, and that was the tarps to the roof. Thank you.
Thank you, Historic Preservation Chair, Kelly Archer. Any further questions from council? Seeing no further questions from council. A motion is to move, a motion that's on the table by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Menthorn, is to move this for a first reading on May 4. If there's no objections, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0, so you'll see this for a first reading on May 4. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 11, we have administrative updates. City Administrator Canrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of brief items to recap on. First of all, our senior programs and our meals program. This past Friday, we held our fourth in this series of senior meals with the Ferry Beach Association, Big Z, we served. We did approximately 200 meals this week, so as you can see, the program keeps growing week by week. We're anticipating about 225 this coming week. We will have this Friday, May 1st, 11 to 12:30, we'll have our ricchettos, and that is being sponsored by H-Friendly Saco. So again, thank you to everyone involved for this program. It grows every week, and by all measures, has been a tremendous success. So thank you. Once again, I'd just like to put out, again, the city's COVID-19 response hotline. That's 294-2436. Any residents or citizens of Saco, please call that number if you have any questions, concerns, or need any assistance from the city or any departments. We can do our best to help you out. You can also feel free to, of course, call me directly anytime, 282-4191 for any needed assistance. Lastly, just a reminder that, as many of you know, the state has moved the June primary election to July 14 of 2020. A reminder that we have two vacant school board seats open this year, and the deadline for nomination papers being due into the city court has now been extended to May 15. So wards one and three for the school board are open, and candidates have until May 15 to submit nomination papers to the city court. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Any questions for Mr. Canrath? Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 12, council discussion and comment. Are any council discussion and comment at this time? Counselor Archer?
Yes, it's more of a request. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whenever, we've been starting these meetings, not doing the Pledge of Allegion, and every single time we do, it kind of hits my heart a little bit. I know that it's where we're kind of limited. So I started to think about that in today's meeting, after that last kind, today's, again, that, yeah. Would it be possible if maybe in Brian's, since he's been at the office every single time, if we just moved the American flag behind him into the back corner or something of that nature? As long as we're actually looking at a flag, we would be able to give the, do the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, it's just more of a personal request, because it does every time. It's kind of zings me, and I kind of came up with a solution where we can just put it in the background. Or there you go, Al. Good job, Counselor Menthorn. That works as well. Again, it can be a digital flag or something to that nature. Just, I'd like to bring it back if possible.
Second.
I will gladly move the flag from the stage to behind me, if you'd like. It'll help my stagecraft also, if I have the other flag right here. So I'll gladly do that for the next meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Archer, and Counselor Johnston, and City Administrator Canrath, and Counselor Menthorn. Any further? Seeing no further council discussion and comment, move to item 13, which is an executive session. Is there a motion for executive session?
Yes, Mayor, there is. Be it ordered, the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6E, consultation with attorney on settlement regarding 5 Wiley Road.
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Copeland. Discussion? So just a reminder, after the vote, we will...
Five-minute recess.
There will be a five-minute recess, and then also, we will be going to the link provided to you by City Administrator Canrath earlier today. So with that, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to enter in our executive session. There'll be a five-minute recess, so please come back at 8:30, 8:33, 8:33.
So we log out of this one?
Log out of this one, and then go to the, go to the link that Brian sent you, and then we'll be coming back to this after our executive session.
Thank you.
Remember your mics and video is still recording and still live until you leave the meeting.
Andrew, can you hear me? Once Councillor Copeland joins, we'll get restarted here. Councilor Coe. All councillors are present. Is there a motion to exit the executive session?
Yes, Mayor. Be it ordered the City Council exit executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6e, consultation with attorney on settlement agreement regarding five Willie Road.
Motion's been made by Councillor Mithorne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Purdy. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Councillor Johnston.
Sorry, I missed that. Did we come out of executive session?
We're coming out of executive, we're taking a vote to come out of executive session.
Okay, forget it.
Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mithorne?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to come out of executive session at nine oh two. Is there a report from executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The City Council authorizes the city administrator to execute the revised settlement agreement and any related documents to effectuate the settlement, provided the other parties, Saco Schools, Toddle Inn, also agree to execute the revised settlement agreement.
Motion's been made by Councillor Mithorne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Gunn. Any discussion? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. I guess my comments are, if this is the will of the council, then I will ask again, as I have previously, that as we move forward, these approvals are done in the public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Johnston. Any further discussion? I'm seeing no further discussions. Roll call vote, Councillor Archer.
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Mithorne.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Mithorne?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnson?
No.
Motion passes six one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Councillor Copeland. Roll call vote, Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mithorne?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes seven zero at nine oh four PM. Thank you very much. Have a great evening and be safe.
Thank you. You too.
Night.
Take it easy.